I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Dear Lord, we want to take a moment before we start this meeting and just say thank you. We made it so far this day, yes. We woke up this morning. Most of us had meals to eat. And before I start, before we start this meeting, I want to take the moment to think about those in Western Carolina. Maybe they didn't have a meal to eat this morning. Maybe they haven't been able to contact their loved ones. Maybe they're still searching for their loved ones. And Lord, we can't do this so much, but we can at least send a prayer their way. Lord, as we conduct this meeting, please grant all of us the wisdom that we need to make the best decisions possible for the people who call Hope County home. Lord, I ask all these things in your son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Allen Thomas. Thank the board for being able to be present tonight. Along with each of you, again, we say welcome to Hope County Local Government. Do her motion to adopt, table, or move forward? Let's open my pen. The motion?
I make a motion.
That's second. Motion's second to adopt tonight, if you move forward. I'll have time to consider, I don't think it would I.
I suppose I have it.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, Attorney, that's a public comment period. You take that.
Public comment period is up. You've got three minutes. There's four, five folks on the signup sheet. Ms. Leandra?
She's first.
I'm always first, I think. I'm just here to see if we've got, I haven't heard any more about our animal shelter, what we're going to do. I'm getting lots of nice comments, but I'm getting some really ugly ones. I'm taking the place of what y'all used to get. I'm getting them now. I need to, we need to get started because it would have been nice if we could have helped the people in Western North Carolina. I know that Rayford Hardware is taking donations and they're sending horse feed and cattle feed and animal food out there. So if any of y'all want to give a donation, you can go buy. Selena Norton's taking it up or having it delivered up to animals because some horses are getting killed. But we need to get started on our animal shelter. I did go thank J and K's family personally. And I let them know how much we all appreciate their input. And do want some input from our county because I've had lots of people to tell me I just handed it over to J and K and y'all weren't going to participate and give any money. And I said, oh, yes, they are. They're tired of seeing me. So we do need to, so I can tell people, yes, y'all are giving, you know, going to help with that. And I really am tired of coming to see you all, so let's get it started. I need to start on the city because I'll be after them to help out a little bit too. So y'all, get rid of me, okay? If you've had any information or know when we might be starting, I know Mr. Sutherland's worked hard on that. So, and I heard there was going to be a committee. I don't know whether there is or not.
I was going to get the county manager. I know she had spoken with, was it Matt from J and K?
Yes, sir.
And Matt, what's, I don't know his last name.
I can't think of right now. I can give you update during the manager's meeting.
Okay.
They're very nice. I met the son-in-law and the son, and I thanked him and everybody out there for supporting us in this thing. I sent him a thank you note, but I also.
And you sent us this thank you card too?
Yeah, I thought that one looked like somebody we know sitting in the middle.
Thank you. Thank you for the card. I'm going to let everybody read the card. This is from Ms. Leandra.
Please hurry up. I'm really getting tired of giving my first names to y'all.
I will tell you this, and I'm going to let the county manager give you an update at the end of the meeting. Matt is on it from J and K. He's the, they got, he's point of contact. So they're looking at drawing and things like that. And I think they're supposed to get with Scotty and try to get together on what the needs are in terms of floor space and all that. But the county manager is going to give you a better and more detail. Oh, yeah, we're going to have a committee.
And I'll be glad to go up to the city for some extra things we might need. They don't want to see me every week.
Thank you.
Mr. Bobby Edens?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Bobby Edens and rebuilt, North Carolina rebuilt my house. And I'm having a problem with it, but I was informed by Mr. Leach this morning, I mean this afternoon, that I'm in a long meeting. But I'm still going with my opinion. When you rebuild a house and you go in your house for the first time, and it looked like a crack house, no shelves, dust all over the place, unfinished. And being a senior, you expect, or being anybody, you expect to go in your house and be able to live in it. I was forced to move back in it due to unqualified guarantee stuff. It's a whole lot of paperwork. But my thing today is, when you've got seniors moving back into a house that's not finished, there's something need to be did about it. Now I found out I'm in a long meeting. But I will be in the right meeting next week. And I'm just letting you know, those contractors is getting over, that y'all don't have anything to do with it. But they're taking advantage of people. Let me look at my time. Okay, I'm good. But it's sort of sad. I've been out the house for nine months. So I'm an inspector myself. I went in to inspect the house and I was pissed. No cabinets, cabinets not up to the walls, whole lot of stuff went up there, handicap accessible bathroom and stuff, all out of place. So I reported. I done went through every process I possibly can. And believe it, Mr. Leach, I know how to dig. I had everybody from Wally in my yard, inspectors, all kind of inspectors. So the thing I did, I'm not dumb. I might be slow, but I'm not, I went and got my own man, my own inspector. So he found stuff that was violated. So what I'm saying is, if those people come in and inspect their houses, the inspector should do a thorough job. Not saying go and pick stuff out, do a thorough job where I won't be complaining. And I'm going to complain regardless. So, but yeah, look, I got the floor now. Y'all don't be quiet. But I got, but look, I appreciate you listening, but you got to help us out. Seniors need help on these contractors coming in, taking advantage of us. Okay? I'm good. I'm good out.
Thank you. So make it very clear, he made it very clear, he was supposed to be in the city meeting because the rebuild from the city of Rayford and the county had absolutely anything to do with it. He made that very clear. That the county had absolutely nothing to do with that program that he's doing with the city. And he'll be in that right meeting next week. So I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that it's one of the county thing, we have absolutely nothing to do with it. I think it's a state program. It's a problem through the city of Rayford.
Rebuilding, see.
Yeah, yeah. I think we get enough, we don't want to take anybody else's February.
Is it John Mercer?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I got the letter on the rezoning of the 29 acres on the corner of Rockfish and Coles. The only thing I have to say about that is that development is going to be a sewer system and that putting to it on the both of them. One is directly across from the Rockfish Elementary School and the other one? Why haven't they hooked up sewer system to the school?
It's on public hearing.
Once a week, a tanker trailer goes in and you can see it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mercer. Which rezoning did you get? What's that, your letter?
The letter is from y'all, from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
What's the issue?
They want to rezone it from 24-8 to R-8. Okay? Which means it goes from single family to multifamily.
So that's been removed from tonight's agenda?
Wasn't on there. Yeah. Why was it removed?
Yeah, so it's removed from the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So when it's back on the agenda, you will get another notice?
Why do we send out the letters?
I can't answer that, but it's removed from the agenda. I know that.
You have two minutes and thirty-five seconds now.
Come on back up. I mean, it's not on the agenda, so I mean, you've got your, you've got your three minutes. Go ahead.
But who, I gave you everything I wanted you to know. But you say it's not on there, but who removed it? Why isn't it on the agenda?
We don't have.
You sent out the letter. Letter was dated the 26th of September.
Mr. Ralph Huff?
I'd like to defer mine until we talk about the water issue.
We got public comment right now and you're on public comment.
We had an IT expert from the FBI to go onto the website today and find out what the proposed new rules are. And I can tell you, I've developed 10,000 lots. I can tell you, it does not work. Fifty lots at a time does not work. Fifty lots, stop. Start over again, does not work. We can't wait another six months for y'all to get it right. So I'd like for you to go ahead and vote on it with understanding that you're going to sit down with people that understand how it does work and draft an ordinance that makes sense and make it public for the citizens. It doesn't say where you have water and where you don't have water. It doesn't say you're working a deal with PWC, which will help certain areas, and you're working a deal with the city of Rayford that'll help certain areas in two years. So. I still got a long time. But, but it, I just, I plead with you to please get some input on the timing of how things work. We've sent things in in February, and it's been on hold since February. Well, that's six months. And what you're going to look at tonight is a Band-Aid. It's a Band-Aid for somebody that's been waiting six months for 50 lots. But how is somebody going to do a five or 600 lot development in Hope County? When you're committing to do it 50, stop. 50, stop. I'll be dead by the time you get through 11 sections a year or two years at a time. It's not because of the sales. The sales are there. What this, what this ordinance is going to do is it's going to stop the sales. There are people here who have bought land since, since you stopped approving subdivisions. They've bought land. They think they got water. They don't. And I've said it, I'll say it in front of these whole, all these people, I hope the news journals hear. You know, it's, you need to just go ahead and say there's a moratorium on growth in Hope County. We're happy we're getting a McDonald's.
Mr. Huff, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Mr. Chris Posey?
I too wanted to talk about item number seven, but I'll go ahead and get to it. They, I was privy to preview the ordinance. And specifically, one of the things I'd like you to consider in the ordinance is there's 50 lots at a time that will, it's vague as to whether or not we can submit 50 lots at a time or the county will offer 50 meters at a time. And what I would encourage you to do is allow people, engineers and surveyors, my peers, to submit a project that may have 100 or 300 lots and get that approved with the state as one project, like we currently do. But you can throttle the water with how much, how many meters you release to the builders, rather than trying to throttle it by having us submit to Hope County, who submits to the state, 50 approved and back through. And then somebody like Ralph calls me after a year or two, when those 50 are done, says, remember that old project? Let's get it back out again, dust it off, and do 50 more lots. Rather than do that, we do, just like we do today. We submit all 200. We get a preliminary approval on a preliminary plan for all 200. Design all 200. Submit to the state for all our proper permitting. And then the permits are in place, the projects are vested, and then you guys can throttle how much water is divvied out, just by how many meters you release. And I look forward to hopefully some sort of peer committee review of the ordinance. But I do appreciate that we're getting together.
Thank you. No, I have to. Agree? Let's see it. Okay, number three is an item of doing a resolution and on in memories of a young man who had lost his life up here in Hope County, if his family would come up at this time?
So tonight we here to share your grief. I can't share your grief with your loss. Much of our prayers that each day and every day, that you look as wonderful, that you're as positive as always. So we find that you don't feel wonderful and all of our children. And one pride, we all cry. And one joyous, we all rejoice. So we stand with you. Thank you, God. I feel like this is part of the loss, not only your family, but my best share of your compassion. And before I do that, I want to call up Ms. Ward, because we've heard about this unfortunate man. And she made it public when she came before and made her request. So I want her to be a part of this as well, with projects, even though we do know about it from what happened. But to put names and faces together, we just want to make it part of this. We thank you for doing that. Thank you to them. This resolution reads, "Holding the memory of James Manson. Whereas James Manson, beloved son of Felicity Lois Manson, Sandra, and George Philip Manson, born November 17, 1997, and he departed this life much too early. And whereas he was a loving, kind, and compassionate individual, who used his time in Dallas to volunteer and to serve Hope County. As an intelligent and academically gifted person, he excelled at Sand Hill Early College, graduated with honors. There were as statements in educational success include, but it is not limited to, being a leader in the National Honor Society, Luapra Theta, Math Honor Society, and Beta Club. He became a congressional debater, where he was recognized for competing with students from outstanding colleges and universities throughout the United States, including, but not limited to Duke, Harvard, and Columbia. He competed in over 50 tournaments. And whereas James Manson was Sand Hill Early College first student to qualify to participate in the national speech and debate competition. Where he earned recognition as an outstanding debater. He participated in the local debate for the district attorney's candidate. Additionally, he was the moderator for two panels of candidates for the office of county commissioner. And whereas James Manson's service to the man did not end with his untimely death. His legacy continues as we remember a great citizen who was fully engaged in family life, volunteering and serving in his county. Now therefore, be of resolve with the board of Hope County Commissioners, acknowledge the loss of a man who served well in our county and united with our deep sympathy to his family, friends, and business associates. Adopted the seventh day of October, 2024, James A. Lee Chairman, Harry Sutherland Vice Chairman, Tony Hunt Commissioner, Robert Wright Commissioner, Alan Thomas Jr. Commissioner, and signed and attested to by William McGugan, trick to the board. Again, I'm sincere.
You do as well. I won't take long. I just wanted to thank Melissa for thinking of this and asking you to do it. And all of you for actually doing it. It means a lot because these kind of things are the only things we have left of James. I also do want to say that he was chairing the animal welfare committee. And I haven't forgotten that we need to make progress on those issues, and I still care. I just need time. But I will be back trying to make progress on those issues in his honor. And I thank you guys so much, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get three minutes?
I just wanted to say thank you and I appreciate, one of the things I've learned from this, I'm sure the people of Western North Carolina are learning from this, you know, what they're going through, is the depth of the compassion of the people in our communities that have poured forward in support of our people. And I just wanted to say thank you for this. It means the world to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been much in our prayers. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Attorney, we have two planning matters.
First matter is a public hearing. It's an application for a special use permit submitted by James and Connie Williams for a tattoo business and a storefront on two acres located at 3991 Fayetteville Road. Ms. Jack?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Mr. Grady just said, it's a condition, a special use permit for Mr. James and Connie Williams for Tattoo Parlor to bid at 3991 Fayetteville Road. The property is currently zoned highway commercial and the parcel number is 694451001009. And the planning board recommends approval. Mr. James is here tonight representing the case. I'm going to call him forward and he can give you what his proposal is.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Jane. Make your case.
How are y'all this evening?
Good.
I'm James Williams. We want to open a tattoo shop. We've been in business 37, well, I've been doing it 37 years. We've been in business in Lumberton for 27. We're a family-owned operated business. We work from about 12 noon till about nine in the evenings. Sunday's family day. We don't work on Sundays. That's just the way it always has been. So my son's going to be an artist that's working with us. We've got six artists in the shop that we're in right now. And basically what we're going to do is separate it and divide it into two shops. So we've been doing it a long time.
Okay.
Any questions?
Not yet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion of public hearing. Come to a close.
A second. Been motion that we close the public hearing. All had time to consider, I don't think it would I. I suppose I have it. It's wish of the board.
It's wish of the board.
I make a motion to approve it.
I second it.
Motion second, that we approve it, all had time to consider, all in favor of what I, I oppose, I approve.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you for your business.
Next item is a, also a public hearing for the application of a general use rezoning submitted by Julian Peters on a four point five acre tract at twenty-nine, twenty-one ninety-seven Highway four oh one business. It's currently zoned residential manufactured home.
Mr. Peters is here to represent his case. Mr. Peters bought this property with the assumption that the property was already zoned highway commercial. And he had already talked to the realtor about doing a used auto car lot there. And so that's why he's here tonight for a rezoning to RM, from RMH to highway commercial, I'm sorry. So, the planning board recommends approval, Mr. Peters is here to answer any questions you may have.
Jackie, hold on just a minute.
It was zoned, the realtor told him it was zoned highway commercial, but it was actually RMH.
No, that, that's fine, that's not my question.
I wanted to clear myself on that one too.
I understand what you're saying, I just got a question.
Yes, sir.
Cause it's not colored on here whether there is or not, is there any of the highway commercial in this area?
Can you, can you go to my screen?
Is that highway commercial?
Yeah, there's some highway commercial in there.
Okay, alright, I see it, okay, I got you now, okay, thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Good evening. I'm Julian Peters, I'm the owner of It's a Deal LLC, I'm currently located at the Rockfish Town Hall on Lindsay Road. So, I'm expanding, I've been there five years, five and a half years, and we only sell pre-owned cars five years and older. We don't keep junk, so not turning it into a junkyard or anything of that nature. Purpose is to relocate from Rockfish to Hope County and establish myself from there.
Okay.
Will, will the area be fenced in?
Yeah, I would fence on both sides, I would fence on.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's a major improvement what you've done to the property. I think the same day you purchased it, you all went to work, it, it seems, it appears that, that work was done very quickly on that, that property. It's interesting light that you have, is that a neon green, what is, what is, what type of light is that?
For the numbers?
Yes.
Oh, I had that, I got that offline, a hundred and eighty bucks, and it just plugs into the wall.
I see, I got you, I got you.
It looks like a total new different building.
Thank you.
It looks good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No questions, sir.
This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak?
Come on out.
Hey, my name's Ronald Canada, my only, I guess, comment or concern about the rezoning would be the bright LEDs shine onto the highway. So the lights are bright lighting to us at night when we're coming from Rockfish. So if we could just reconsider the positioning of the lights, I think that would be wonderful for everyone driving.
So I don't think that you let that stop you from your zoning, will you?
Thank you.
You wouldn't let that stop you?
No, sir.
You wouldn't kind of help out the good neighbor with that light?
Absolutely.
Is that okay with you?
Oh, perfect.
Okay, that really easy? Thank you, okay, so please do that, will you?
We did actually move the lights because somebody went online and was real ugly, saying it's tacky in the place.
I'm not surprised.
I said, again, when it was a crack house, it wasn't tacky. How about now?
Okay.
I asked them to adjust the lights so they're all actually shining onto the property and not to, not like the gas station shining directly to the earth.
Okay, sounds good, very good, thank you, so we're back real good, thank you, alrighty.
A public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak?
She said it was a hurry y'all, so. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close, close the public hearing.
A second. Motion second, close the public hearing, all had time to consider, in favor of what I, I oppose, I have it.
Make a motion to approve it.
A second, motion to approve, and he, he, he committed that he would change the light for hers, all in favor of what I, I oppose, I. All opposed, I, I have it, approve, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say it's commendable for a business owner to care about what people think. You know, for them to make that change before we even asked them to, you know, based on a comment that he saw online. I've never met him before, but I just want to say I think that's commendable.
It is.
That, 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 as being a business owner in Hope County, that you care about the people who live in the surrounding area.
Absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
They're putting power to truth, thank you. Alright, consent, anyone having a concern, A, B, C, D, E? If not, I'll ask a motion.
Make a motion to approve it, second.
A second, all in favor of what I, I oppose, I have it, thank you. Ms. Daphne W. Good evening.
Yeah. It is time to write off our eleventh year of taxes that we do once every, we carry ten years and the eleventh year we write off. So for real estate, there's two thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Personal property is seven thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and eleven cents. And motor vehicles at two hundred eighty dollars and seventeen cents. For a total that I'm asking to be written off is nine thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and forty.
Okay, you heard the numbers, you heard the, from the tax requirement, wish of the board?
Make a motion to approve it.
A second, motion second, had time to consider, in favor of what I, I oppose, I have it, thank you, Daphne. Hurry till the water insurance, Mrs., Mr. James McCoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have before you a water and sewer allocation board, and do I have a fairness to kind of?
Yes, sir.
You guys, much time as you need, James, you should be on the clock.
Yes, sir. When you guys hired me, you brought me in so that we could actually keep utilities back to where it needed to be. And since that time, we've done a lot of studies and we looked at a lot of data. And what we've done since I've been there, we've basically balanced the checkbook. We were writing and giving allocations to basically any location without doing a check balancing process. So what my staff has done is we went through the process of going through and looking at all the allocation that has already been promised. And we looked at all of the actual, actual meters that we have in our system. With our GIS coordinator, we've actually discovered and went through the process of look and found that based on the different zones and locations, how we have our system balanced out to know exactly how much allocation is available in each zone. We divided the county up into five zones, and what we've done with those five zones, we have PWC four one zone. We have McCain, and we also have Neil Sinclair, Aragon, Antioch. And in those zones, if you try to develop and there's no water allocation there, your job, when you hired me, was to protect the citizens of Hope County and look out for everyone that actually lives in this county. And in that process, what we've done is we made sure that the county will be viable moving forward. So I'm asking you to take a look at the ordinance, and I know the ordinance may not be perfect yet, but we will work to make sure that ordinance is perfect, and we will develop and we will close every loophole that, that ordinance may have.
Chairman, ask you a question, just off the top of my head, sometime I do that. On the, the young man who was speaking earlier about, let me tell you how this work. If you get from the state and all, get two or lots approved, but you will only issue the meter for fifty or twenty-five or however many you need to issue. Did you hear that, what's your feedback with that?
Okay, so what we've done, if you look at how we have the ordinance written, so in the first paragraph, it talks about the fifty lots that he, he mentioned, that is true. And what we tried to do is go through the process of allowing or to be able to what I call onesie twos. What that means is, I can still build a house if I'm a resident in Hope County, if I just want to build one house. But when you talk about fifty lots, some, in some places, we may not even be able to give you fifty lots. That's why when we go through our board, this is our process, we will take your, your comments and your actual application, bring it to our utility committee, we will look at it and I will give data on what that location and what we have available at that location. And that utility committee meeting, we will vote on then whether or not we have allocation to give or not to give. If we decide not to give allocation, I will give you a formal letter saying that we chose in the utility committee not to give allocation. If that's the case and we allow to give allocation, we will take it to the board of five, you guys will vote on whether or not you're gonna give allocation. That's the best way I know to make sure that this policy works moving forward. And like I said before, I know it's not perfect, but we're gonna work to get it perfect.
So, now James, with this state, if, say I come with a two hundred lot subdivision and I want to get, I want to get it approved at the state level, right? When the state looks at that, do the state look at our reports that we're sending in with our availability of water? Or how does the state, what does the state look at that?
What we've done is, when I got here, our first thing I did was do what they call a local water supply plan. And what it does, it gives you a, basically a calculator, it tells you how much you produce, how much you purchase, and how much you're actually allotting out. And basically what we found out when we got to that percentage, so the state said at eighty percent, you need to start looking at how you're gonna actually bring water or produce more water in your, in your utility. So what we did in that process, that was the first hint, that we need to start looking at what we had as far as allocation. So when we submit or when I take the applications from the developers or from the engineers, we take a look at what they're asking for. And like I said before, the number or the going number now per, per connection is a hundred and fifty gallons, is what the connection. The state really wants you to use four hundred, but because we do a water supply plan, we can actually use a hundred and fifty. So the number is actually lower. But if we go through a process of giving allocation and we divide it up, or we give the whole two hundred lots, then what do we have to stand on if they decide they want to build that out within a year if we don't write something in our ordinance that says that they can't?
Okay.
I, I have some questions. So, so I know we spoke about this at our retreat, and, and so what's catching me off guard is the fifty lot minimum. I, I know when we spoke about this at the retreat, we were talking about developers holding on to, to water supply. They were getting approved for, for water and not developing for a certain amount of time, but they're still in our books. And, and so I know we spoke about that, I know we spoke about you having the authority, once we reach, and I see that in three A here in the policy. Allocation is by the director, when the county has allocated seventy percent of its available capacity for water, that it would no longer be given. So I know we spoke about that. The, the fifty lot minimum though, is that countywide? Is it, is this fifty lot minimum, is this a countywide ordinance that we're about to pass?
What, what we're looking at is the fact.
I just, I mean, I, cause I have a follow-up question, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, is, is that, so no matter where you are in the county, you can only apply for fifty lots when it comes to water supply?
Yes, if there's availability.
Okay, yeah, I'm just talking about applying, so, you know, they could be denied, but, and, and are the water supply issues, is it an issue countywide? But like, if PWC in that area, we had a map for the different zones that you just spoke about. With the PWC, are there, are there the same level of water issues there as, or like Neil Sinclair?
Yes, sir, so, so PWC, we have a contract, and there's a maximum amount of water that they are allowed to give. So we look at the numbers of proposed and future development and what we currently have in PWC, which is we consider the Rockfish area. That area is growing immensely, and that process, if you take the numbers that will have been allotted, in, in two years, we're gonna have to go back to the growing board and ask for additional water, that's what I'm trying to prove.
When's the last time we asked for additional water from PWC?
Well, right now, so we're still trying to get the contract signed for the fifty one, we've been working on that almost two years now.
Okay.
So we were at, what, thirty-nine million a month? And now we, we've got a contract that they had agreed to, that there was some mis-spelled words or whatever, and we sent it back, and we're waiting on to get it back, and it's gonna go to fifty-one million is as high as they would let us go, right? Yeah, and we're, part of my understanding from PWC is, James, is that at fifty-one million, we may be capped unless we start investing in their infrastructure over in PWC, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, so what that means is, is that if we get to the point where we have to go over to fifty-one million a month, then the only way we're gonna get any more water from PWC is, is that they're gonna ask us to help pay for their upgrades on their side of the county, which is gonna become way more expensive than just buying water from PWC. Let me, let me answer a couple of other questions too, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What we, what we're trying to do in this ordinance, since I sat on the utility committee, is that what we have to do, somebody mentioned something about stopping growth in Hope County. Well, the point of the matter is, is that we cannot risk our citizens that have water right now not having water a year from now, because we want to meet the demands of developers coming over wanting to develop land and sell all that they can sell, and then they're gone, and then the problem is our problem. We're not, I'm not gonna sit on that committee or appear on this commission and allow that to happen without my voice and my opinion. I'm gonna protect the citizens that are here now and that are getting water. We've got some things in place, we're working with our legislators to change some language, on doing a partnership with developers where they can actually maybe dig some wells on their property and where we can lease them back from them to own. We've already talked to our senator, they agreed about that, we've sent a message over to Carl and Pierce. They're working on that together to try to get that text change done. If they can get that text change done, because what happened years ago when that infrastructure was put in place, it was put in place that we could only reimburse it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, it was written so long ago, you could probably dig a well for that back then. But what we're hoping is that with inflation and the cost of everything going up, that the legislators are gonna see that, hey, this is just a matter of catching up with inflation and that they're gonna move that, we're hoping they're gonna move that meter to eight hundred thousand. We, that's already been sent over to a committee, so that's one thing we're working on. The other thing we're working on is that we, if you read the newspaper, it talks about McCain. We've put our hands in that to where we can work on it now, it's ours, we're already doing some test wells up there. We're working on getting water from up at McCain. And we're doing on the highway two eleven, we're going from an eight inch pipe to a twelve inch pipe. And what that'll do is that allow us to bring more water down from up there down to Neil Sinclair and to some other places that we'll, we'll be able to do. So we've got, we've been on this almost a year now, we've seen the problem, we understand that there's a problem. We don't want to stop growth, I've always been a proponent of growth, because you know, if something don't grow, it dies. But I've always said we've got to have smart growth. Now, what I would say, Mr. Chairman, is that what we're putting in place tonight is something to protect our citizens that we have now that have water, and we must do that. Now, as James said, if there's some tweaking that we need to do, then what we'll do is, we'll have a utility meeting, we'll invite all of the developers to come to our utility committee meeting. That's the place that we can sit down and iron this out, then if we need to make amendments to it, we can come back and make some amendments to it, but that would be the place that we could maybe iron that out better than sitting here in the commissioners' meeting. But we need to go ahead and get this in place, Mr. Chairman, so that we've got a template of what we're gonna do. And as he said, we're, we're not looking to this being unplanned, we, we're listening to everybody that's involved. And if we need to do some tweaking, then we want the utility committee to come back to this board with some recommendations. We make that promise to everybody, because listen, we understand that people have property that they bought, they wanted to develop it. We want you to develop it, because we understand that you develop it, the more our county grows, the better off we'll be. But we got to have that smart growth. So, Mr. Chairman, I would say if we go ahead and get this done tonight, it'll give us a template that we can take back to our utility committee meeting, invite our developers, let them come in and voice their opinions and maybe some ideas, and we'll see if there's some of those things that we can work in. And if we need to come back and make some amendment, we can always come back and make amendments. But what we're trying to do tonight as a utility committee is to protect our citizens that are getting water right now. They're, they're the most important people right now, and we make sure that we've got water for those folks. We make sure that we've got water for those folks right now. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna add another question for James, that we were up talking earlier about saying, San Hope, I mean, Hope and Raferd, the elementary school, Rockfish Elementary, I'm getting all mixed up. The sewer for that, sir, is gonna be put in when the children go out for the Christmas break. They will work on getting that sewer hooked up across the road, so the elementary school will be on the sewer. What caught us and held us up was actually the electrical company had some issues getting electricity down to the lift station. And so it held us up a couple of months and kind of fed us off. We were hoping we'd be able to do that this summer, but we weren't. But now that's in the plans to get that done while they're out during Christmas. So we're working on those things, and we hope that folks will have patience with us, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, James, you look very good. There was reason to PWC contract not be signed tonight, there was some arrows in it, and it wasn't known outside of the house. And you've been so honest, you sent them back to them to let them clean up the area. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. I'm having difficulty, once again, this is not quite, you know, and of course, it's a crazy expectation for me to assume that everything we talked about months ago would be in this policy. But does it address, does this new policy address holding water supply for a certain amount of time? And where is that in this, in this policy?
In the vesting part, it should be towards the back. Basically, what it talks about is the fact that if you are vested here and you hold on to allocation, and you haven't made a move on it in two years, the county, because we're the committee, can go back and reclaim that allocation.
That's two years, I see it here. Okay, item eight, okay. And so my main issue of contention is the 50 lots, the 50 lot application for water supply. And I have a question for you, and hopefully it'll be straight enough, straightforward for a yes or no answer. If 10 separate developers submit 50 applications in January for water supply, you will hear all 50, all 50 of each one of their, of course, you will answer yes or no to each one. That's 500 applications. If in February, one developer submits one application only for 500, you won't even hear it. Is that correct?
I'm not clear, can you repeat that again?
So in January, 10 different developers submit their maps of 50 applications for water supply.
Okay.
You will hear all of them and make a decision, yes or no, for all 500 of those?
Yes.
If in February, the next month, it's a slow month, and only one developer submits the application, but they submitted for the same number, 500, they could not even apply?
For 500, for one developer? Based on our policy, no, sir, they wouldn't be able to. It's only 50.
But why is it, why is it okay to rastle it out between 10 different people? That's okay, but one developer, why is that a problem? I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to-
So what we've done is, if you look at it, it's a case-by-case basis, first come, first served. In that process, what we're trying to do is make sure that it's fair and equitable for everyone.
And it could be simple, the 50 lot each, you might have water in that zone. The 500 lot, you may not have water in that zone.
Yes, sir, that's possible.
So it's gonna have to be case-by-case.
Yes, sir.
If you've got water in that zone for the 500, you can take care of it. If you've got water in the zone for the 50, you take care of it. Right, so right now, if you were to get an application for 500, right now, you have the authority to say no to what isn't there? If it's not there? If it's not there.
Yes, sir.
We can answer that question now. We don't have a zone anywhere that we could give 500 lots. Yeah, we could answer that right now.
But I guess my question is, if he already has the authority to make a determination based on water supply only, so we're not picking winners or losers, you know, it's simply about water supply. You know, maybe there's a supply for 100. You know, if they submit an application for 200, you can approve them for the 100. You know, you can currently have that authority. Why not keep that authority? Why, I don't understand why we would just pick an arbitrary number of 50, instead of what you deem has been available?
Well, basically what we looked at, to stop, to not to stop some development, 50 would be a good starting point. Like I said before, this is not ironclad. And what we're doing is, we're doing the process of trying to work through it and figure out what's gonna be the best way forward. But 50 right now was a good starting point. And giving the 50 gives people an opportunity that wanted to, because some people don't have the money that Mr. Huff have. Some people still wanna develop, and they don't have that type of money to be able to do 500 or 1,000 lots or whatever. But you might be able to do 50. Anybody can basically develop 50 lots. That's what I'm getting, and that's what I see every day. People are coming with different allocations and different plaits, winning or losing. Could I develop this here in Hope County?
Mr. Chairman, I think we all understand the issues. I have an issue with one sentence in this thing. You know, as we move forward with speaking to developers, you know, and hearing from them, the first sentence in item two is the issue that I'm having. We as a board have committed to the community that we're gonna move forward to talk about affordable housing. Of course, infrastructure is important, you know, but I do not see this as being something that will increase the amount of affordable housing in the community. You know, I see it as the exact opposite. Of course, you know, we can't build if we don't have water supply, we all recognize that. You know, but people who are partnering with us and making, you know, tough decisions to build homes in an affordable rate, they need to build a large amount of homes in order to make money. If you're gonna build homes for cheap, so that people who are making like a teacher's salary can afford it, you can't do that 50 at a time. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I don't want us to get into an argument. You know, I know we have differences of opinion. But item two, the first sentence, I just wanna go out on record and say I have a problem with it.
Let me say this now, my James, James is making a recommendation to the board. That's his job, is to come to us and make a recommendation. That's what he's standing there, that's what they're doing. He come and make a recommendation. And what he's saying to us, it's more recommendation to the board. But obviously, I'm gonna do whatever the boards say do. That's why he's standing for you tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I-
That's simple.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I understand all the issues. I understand the hard work went in to make this policy for ordinance to come before us. I appreciate what Tony's talking about, straightening it all out. But I would like to have a public hearing on it, and hear the developers and stuff talk to the whole board, rather than just the committee, before we decide on it. I, I would like to hear from them before we make a decision. I mean, I don't think another couple of weeks is gonna make a whole lot of difference to the whole program. But just, let's say that you got the public notice before you can have a public hearing. You can't have one tonight because we didn't advertise it. So I say, let's postpone it. Let's, let's put it on whichever next gender or two genders out. Tony know more about that than I do, but that's my opinion before we vote on it.
Is that your motion?
Let's give all our opportunity to talk about it.
If he makes a motion-
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion to table it and have a public hearing on it.
Okay. I second his motion.
He already had the motion tabled. I'll have time to consider all in favor of it, I, I, as I have it. We just do a public hearing, James tabled.
I'll make a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
I do echo Commissioner Thomas's thoughts as well. My thing was, and my understanding was that, the first thing we're gonna do is all these developers who had allocation that was three, four, five years old, that have not started the process, we were gonna take that water back from them and put it back into your, I'm gonna say your account, so to speak, so that we would have a good understanding of where we are on that, on that level, whether we are 80% or 70% of water capacity. So I think that we have to go back and look at those developers who have allocation of 100 lots, 200 lots, maybe in 2002, 2005, I'm not, 2020, 2022, or whatever. And take those guys off the books, because for some reason, they're not developing. And then you don't let a few bad apples, in terms of development or contractors, spoil the ones that are doing a good job with the county in dealing with the smart growth. I think, I think 50 lots is not reasonable. Developers or, you really can't do anything with 50 lots. Like you said, a modest, very small developer could, or the contractor could, but not someone who's trying to develop many homes at affordable rate. The affordability comes in when you, when you do major lots, 200 lots, 100 lots, 100 lots, 300 lots. And then because you buy everything involved, that brings the house, price of housing down, which benefits directly to the consumer, to the buyer. I think we have some good things going on with PWC. We have an agreement. The chairman would have signed that agreement about two or three weeks ago, but there was some errors that you caught, that actually would have benefited them, but you were so honest enough to catch those errors. It went back to February, they're gonna bring it back so he can sign it. That's gonna give us another 51 million gallons. Is that, that's per month, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna be-
That'd give us additional, we already got 39, so it's gonna, yeah, it'll give us about 12, yeah, a little bit more.
And then we got, we just signed an agreement a couple of weeks ago with the state of North Carolina for McCain. So we've got some things in progress that are moving forward. And then we have a tentative agreement with the city of Raferd that may be two years out, as we're trying to move that forward. And then we also, like Tony Hunt said, we're talking with developers about doing some public-private partnerships to put some wells in our four, five different zones. So I think that we're headed in the right direction. I think 50 lots is really, is really tough. I think Mr. Pooty came up with a great idea, and I really like that idea that you came up with, on how we could maybe all together, exactly what you said, it was perfect. It was perfect, I loved it. I think something like that, input from our developers and our engineers and our people that are in the process, would help us develop something that's best for Hope County. I don't think all developers, engineers, or whatever is just looking out for the benefit to make money. I think a lot of them have interest in our county for the development of Hope County as well. So I think that I agree with Mr. Wright, let's have a public hearing, let's come back, and then we can even talk in private with some of the developers and get some ideas from them, and then maybe incorporate that with the utilities committee. I think you all did an outstanding job. I talked to you today, you've been working on this, like Tony Hunt said, about a year. So you put a lot of time in it, you did what we asked you to do, we're happy with that. But as a opponent of growth, smart growth, I don't wanna kill the growth. And certainly I don't wanna stop the growth. But I wanna, I wanna promote something that could work, where we all come together. The best deal in any type of agreement is when everybody gives something. The county give a little bit, the developers give a little bit, everybody gotta give something.
Ralph give us 30 acres, Ralph give us 30 good acres to put a well on?
I didn't, I didn't say that.
You can take 30 acres. We're counting on that.
But that's what I'm saying, when everybody come in, it's a partnership. So I think that's why we need to, we need to come back. I think you're on the right steps, you're going in the right direction. We do need an ordinance, because you gotta have some guidelines to go by. When you, when you came here and you took us over, you had to create and-
It was aimed-
About everything, and following all, based on what we have in North Carolina. So what you're doing is outstanding job, and you're very intelligent, you know this job better than anybody up here. You really do.
And that's for sure.
But we wanna, we wanna keep it moving, so I'm certainly agree with Commissioner Wright. Let's, let's put everybody together, all the stakeholders, come and let's talk about what we need to do to make it work for everybody. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
They're doing a good job. Mr. Chairman, I also wanna echo thanks for this policy. Like I said earlier, it's only one line. It's only one line that I have a problem with, out of this whole, how many pages is this? Seven-page policy. You know, and so, so, you know, unless the developers are very convincing, because I'm pretty sure they have a whole lot more problems than just one line. You know, I just want you to know, you know, I do support the work that you've put in on this. And, you know, based on what I believe, you know, is that the developers shouldn't be able to write our policies. You know, I'm just gonna, gonna be honest. You know, and I appreciate the work that you're doing protecting this county, is your job to protect our interests. And I just wanna say thank you for the hard work. I'm sure it's not easy to stand before us and present something this impactful. But I say, you know, keep going, keep doing the job that you're charged to do, which is make sure that every resident that lives in this county, when they turn on the faucet, water comes out. You know, and so that is your most important charge when it comes to water. And I just want you to know that I appreciate what you've done, and I look forward to supporting the passage of a water and sewer allocation ordinance. Thank you, sir.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
So this is the issue that we currently have now. So water allocation permits are on my desk. And those gentlemen over there want their allocation and their water permit signed. So I need to find out from the board what's the way forward with those permits and also those plaits.
I say use your authority. Me personally, that's why I asked, I asked earlier, if you get a request for 200 lots, you currently have the authority to make a decision that there's water for 150. That's kind of your authority. You know, so unless the board, you know, has a different perspective.
And you are licensed.
Use it.
And your license is on the line every time you sign an application. Your license is on the line, not mine, not anybody else up here, your license. So you got to use your best authority and your best discretion on what you think is right. And you're presented to, typically, you're presented to your utilities committee and to the county manager.
You're good?
Thank you, James.
Yes, sir.
Don't leave your license, 'cause I don't have any give you.
James, I appreciate the ordinance that you bring, I appreciate the hard work you did, and I hate to hold you out another month or something, but I'd just like to hear from everybody.
Yes, sir.
I realize the committee does a lot more hearing than the whole board does, but I think it would be beneficial for the whole board and the public in general if we had a chance to all of us talk together.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the public hearing is a great idea, I don't have any problem with it. I just wanna say to our citizens, I hope that they come and show up at that public hearing so you can help protect your interests. So make sure you look for that advertisement. So, Mr. Chairman, when Mr. James goes back now and he starts looking at those requests, and he denies them now, don't, and you get calls from developers now, don't call him, chew him out now, 'cause you told him to do what is, what is best for the county. So don't, I'm just saying, don't kill him out now when he denies it, okay? All right, if the water ain't there, the water is not there, okay?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, darling.
Okay, we have some surplus, surplus property that we showed the board. Supplies property.
You don't need to talk, you don't need to talk about it?
No.
I don't think Marvin's here, but I can do it.
He's here. Travis can tell you about it, come up quite quickly.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Before you, you have requests for permission to advertise the property located at 186 Raindrop Loop. The amount that we received was a bid amount of $4,777. Once again, this is just a request to advertise this.
So was this an upset bid before we talked about?
No, sir. This is, we're requesting to advertise this, we just received this bid.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, I have, thank you, Oliver.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
That'll be good.
I will give an update on the animal control-
Animal shelter.
Shelter. As I stated before, I am working with J and K on this with Matt. I'm also working with animal control and the shelter. One of the things that has taken the time is they are, they had to go, we had to do a kickoff. They had to go and actually look at animal shelter where the shelter and animal control wanted this add-on to happen. They actually had to look at what they wanted, and what the shelter wanted to happen, and where they wanted the improvement. I mean, it is really the shelter and where they want the add-ons to happen, because they had a specific place that they want it to happen, and where they actually wanted the improvements to happen, and where it could happen, because of where they're located. So they had to go out there, check it, do measurements, and to see what they actually could do out there. And then they had to do some renderings for us, to see what we could do and what the material would be. And they had to bring it back to us to see, based upon what they're saying, they're going to donate to us with labor and money. They have to bring back me a cost, to see, will that work? And then I have to decide to come back to the board and say, this is what it'll cost, and what do we have to do some additional? And then I have to decide to come back to the board and say, this is what it'll cost and what do we have to do some additions to that. So I actually have a cost amount to what we want to do. So they're gonna get those renderings to me. We have just about everything together. Once I get that renderance, then we have to talk about other things. Will we need additional furnishings and other things that I have to do? Because I have to bring a final cost back to this board of this project to see what we want to do with it. So it's not just as simple as we starting it and us finishing, and we have to have a cost to this for the board, for us to move on with this project. And for this project to be accept, accepted and for us to finish this project, it's not just them donating money to us.
It could involve new employees too.
It, it, it could involve a lot of things. So, I mean, we have to be legal about this to the board because we accepted money to do something. But you guys didn't accept this project yet to say that you guys are gonna do this whole project. So I do have to bring a project back to this board.
What, what point were you gonna, um, involve the committee?
Um, well, y'all didn't establish a committee yet. We just did a kickoff. And once I get this project established, then you guys will, can appoint a project, um, committee for this project.
Because we need, I know we're gonna add something to it, because if you're gonna do it one time, do it nice. Do what we need to do, put the money we need to put in it, and make it real nice one time for a while, that it may last five, ten years, whatever, fifteen.
Yes, sir.
I, I get it, man. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so I think we, we go ahead and kick it off. Um, Bobby was saying like, we'd like to kick this off and make it a nice.
Yes.
Shelter, see what the county have to add to it.
Yes.
And go ahead and add that to it. So we have a project now. After they bring us back the sets of plan that we need to see, at that point, we can add the committee to it to go ahead and see what steps the, the, how many beds, whatever we need to make.
Y'all will need to add some additional things.
Yeah, we gotta put money to it. Okay.
Okay.
Do we have to add money to the construction though? Or, 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 are we as a group, because I, I, I thought they were donating this to, to build something that was worth the amount that they were donating. So, so are, are we anticipating that, that as you all go out and view other shelters and look at other opportunities and, and they draw up plans? Are they looking at what's possible within the amount of money that, that we're being given?
That's what we're doing right now to make sure it's within that amount.
Okay.
And that's all we did.
Because, I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, and this is probably a grady question. Let's say, let's say someone went rogue and the, the final project ended up being five hundred thousand, where we had to add hundreds of thousands of dollars to it. Can we do that without bidding?
No.
No.
You know, I think that's, I think that's where we need to be on the same page, that this project is within the scope of the donation and that we are approving the design. We, we are approving where it's gonna go there, where it's gonna go, but, but the donation has to cover the entire project. Of course, absent the furniture, you know, absent of, of other things that we can cover, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I did it for it to stay within what they did, and anything after that, I'm coming to the board for furniture and things like that.
Right, so we can pay for furniture, we can pay for furniture, all that kind of stuff, but as far as the construction, this covers it, okay?
That's why I'm just waiting to get the renderings because we are keeping it within the money that they donated. And that's why I haven't come to you guys for anything because I need it to be within that.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
And, and so we have to understand now, when it goes to the committee, if the committee comes back, they want to add two hundred or three hundred square foot to it. Then the county cannot pay for that because it's not been bitted out.
Right.
So if you're gonna add something, you have to start all over and bid the whole project out, right?
But we, we.
Am I right, Greg?
Yes.
Yep.
Can we pay for the design?
I will.
Can, can, can we pay for the design and this only be a construction only cost, the donation?
This is labor and construction, what they.
Yeah, because they, they did not pay for, for just any design.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can pay for, we can do.
We, we can cover the design. Okay, I just want to make sure we can, we can fund that part. Yeah, yeah, we, we can take care of that.
That's kind of stuff I wanted to wait until y'all see, saw the renders and stuff. That's why I wanted y'all to do the rendering for y'all guys to be involved. Because that would be the stuff we can pay for.
Yeah, we, we can pay for all that stuff. Either way, yeah, we can pay for that.
Right, right, right.
That stuff we can pay for. Yeah, yeah.
That was a good point.
So that's why I didn't want y'all to appoint a committee until it was our money. That's why I wanted you guys to wait for that.
Yeah. That's right. Very good.
You had them all here tonight. You had your chance. We'll catch them at the public hearing. How about that?
Y'all good with that?
All right, yeah. You finished?
No. Um, the other thing that I wanted.
Right here. Yeah, I can do more than I can.
Uh-oh.
The other thing is that I wanted the board to know, and I, and I try to let you guys know because I, I keep you informed of anything that I do just on our side. That I did, I have, um, because we have a mutual aid agreement, I did send our emergency management department, um, to western North Carolina. Um, I sent them, they'll periodically go, the, we'll keep sending our team there. Um, we also sent some donations there. We had stuff, and so we sent donations on behalf of Hope County also. But I have Andrew there. I told him to put a brief thing, um, a brief, um, slideshow together for you to tell you what our deployment did for Hope County Emergency Management so that he could give you a, a quick deployment of what we did from Hope County.
Evening, Chairman, members of the board. First disclaimer, this is not my wife's doing. This is a tree. It happened off of county time. This is all Andrew's fault.
You say so.
I want to first start out by saying, this is more than what has been categorized in the news as being North Carolina's Katrina. It is far more than that. And I want to first say thank you to the county manager. I sent word to my boss, Brian, on Friday, and I said, hey, man, I think it's pretty bad. We might want to look at going. And this office has never deployed outside of a couple of counties. We worked the U S Open in Moore County and made different events three or four counties away. But the idea of us going downrange for a week hadn't happened before. Uh, Brian and Miss Edens worked throughout Saturday to make sure all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, not only just my I, um, and, and got things together to make sure we're ready to go. Sunday morning, myself and Chris Douglas rolled into western North Carolina. Uh, we left at six A M. And I just want to talk on this platform. I'm, I'm pretty passionate about this. I'm fired up. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that I was, I was in a, in a dark cell when I came out, and I seen social media saying all kinds of terrible things and the fabrications that go with, uh, disinformation being intentful and misinformation. And a lot of things were in the area that I worked in, and, um, I just want to go over a couple of those things and let you know how much of an impact Hope County made. I was proud to be amongst the, all hundred counties, including East of Bana, Cherokees, that it did impact, but we also had the emergency management offices in, in the west. And I'm gonna, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for, for allowing and empowering this emergency management office that you do annually. Because I'm telling you what, I went west and it opened my eyes to how good I got it here, but also opened my eyes to the things we're gonna do in the future here. Um, but I'll, I'll stop talking and try to make it quick. This picture here is, um, folks, I, I guess most of us are probably born here on the east coast. I know we got a couple of transplants that the managers lived everywhere. I could not fathom a landslide. When they said a landslide came down forty, I figured a piece of a hill fell in the road and we were at one lane of traffic. There were landslides everywhere. Uh, these are already rural spots, far more rural than, than Dundalk or Beaumont or any of the places we have here in Hope County. These folks here, going to town is actually an event. So I was in Black Mountain, North Carolina, which is just a couple of minutes outside of Asheville, in Buncombe County. And, uh, the impacts and efforts are still going on today. I just want to, to highlight this a little bit. I was deployed to the town of Black Mountain. This gentleman to my right is Kirby Saunders. He's the, uh, emergency manager and our team lead for, um, Orange County Emergency Services. Wesley is over in Tyrell County, and Dwayne is from, uh, Carteret. Chris Douglas worked in the regional coordination center, so he worked as a resource unit leader, uh, back in Hickory, and I went downrange, uh, to work in the field. These are some rain totals that just, uh, kind of grasp over three days. Parts of western North Carolina saw over thirty inches of rain in three days. We see thirty inches here. It's a big deal, but we don't have thirty inches coming down three thousand foot of elevation into a valley. And to see, you know, I, I don't know this place intimately, but to see where rivers and streams once were that are no longer there, they actually cut new channels. And it's just, it's one of those things that you know only the feet of God can do. Man, man can't move rivers like this. It can't, it can't occur. These are the wind gusts. If you look here in the western part of the state, these are sustained gusts, fifty, sixty, that hundred and six. Mount Mitchell had wind gusts at the top of the tallest peak east of the Mississippi of a hundred and six miles an hour. When I arrived into the area where I was at, we know wind here, folks. That's what gets us a lot of time. Our trees go down the top of the power lines. I first started looking, and I said, my God, they got some strong wind here, and they did, but that's the power of water. This is when the landslide's on I forty. D O T has established the base camp there. This is why, um, traffic to the west, I'm sure you all were getting the blast, that traffic was, uh, was cut off the western North Carolina, and for good reason. I have a considerable bit of photos, but I tried to keep this brief, uh, to be mindful of the meeting here. I was assigned the Black Mountain Fire Department, four hundred ninety-three rescues. It was a infrastructure-focused mission. Um, we have water issues here. We don't have water problems like they have water problems. They receive sixty percent of their capacity from the city of Asheville. Their twenty-four inch main that is decimated. They don't know when they'll return back to full capacity. Um, I'll also tell you something else about this. In the past, we've requested through the state web E O C, which is the portal we use to get resources. And I've always said the state will send this or no, they won't send that. When we activate here again in Hope County, I'll ask for unicorns or lepre- leprechauns. They gave anything for this. I sent up a request for five hundred feet of ten-inch iron duct line. It arrived two days later at no cost to Black Mountain or Buncombe County. State was a great partner in this. If you, if you're seeing stuff, um, that's saying folks aren't engaged and there's not stakeholders there. I spent seven days there, boots on the ground, twenty-hour days. I assure you, that is the case. Um, zero communication, and Chris Covington's back here hiding, but I want to give kudos to Chris. I woke him up at seven-thirty on Sunday morning. I said, hey, man, this little black box with this crater pointed at this, this big satellite, this, uh, big cellular data plan. I need you to cut some SIM cards on for me because I'm in trouble. When I arrived at Black Mountain, it was running about this size here, they pulled two decon lights off the fire truck and zipped tight them to the ceiling so you could have light. And they were running drop cords from the outside. They had no communications by cellphone or even by those six thousand dollar radios we buy that state says we have to have. Landline was gone the way of the dinosaur. I couldn't get in contact with any ham operators. I went in that box, flipped open a switch, plugged in a cord, and we were able to get out. The, the, the communication, it was the most eerie feeling I'd ever had. Nobody knew where I was at or what I was doing, and we didn't know what else was going on in the world. We were able to use that resource that we had here in Hope County to extend out with other partners that brought in stuff that we knew we would need. Other gentlemen also brought those type of things, and we were able to get basic stuff that we take every day for, for granted. Text message was the official mode of transportation or mode of messaging and communication for a number of days. You, you, you just couldn't support voice calls. Zero fuel. When I got there, I assumed the role, the role of our operations chief and, and planning section chief, those folks had been in response since Thursday. The first thing the fire chief and the police chief walked up to me and said, we're mission critical. We can only run absolute functions right now. We can't do any more well-being checks. We only have the fuel that's in the fire trucks and in the police cars. There was no way to get fuel on to Black Mountain at that time. And no electricity. They did a rough damage survey. This is a town of about eighty-five hundred people. Um, not, not a lot of, it's mostly residential, not a lot of development there. Two hundred roads and or bridges were out. I'm gonna tell you something, um, going from a county E M to a city E M, they got problems we don't want. They're like, hey, the roads are out. I'm like, they are a problem. It's states. No, we own that. Yeah, you, you do. I don't. Roads and bridges being out, something I'd never had to consider before. We hadn't had to worry about it since nineteen twenty-nine when the general assembly changed it. Um, that was a, a big meaningful impact for us. This is what their infrastructure looks like in roads. This is a manhole cover here, and essentially going down this mountain, the water took the path of least resistance. I was out in the field doing a damage assessment with assistant town manager, and one of the things that I've never worried about working here in Hope County. She comes up and she says, I, I, I don't know how we're gonna pay for all this. It's been more than one time that, from this commission, we've heard about fund balances and importance of it. The thought of not just this jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions, having issues with the revenue they're collecting, to be able to maintain the functions of government and the contracts they're gonna have to enter into to get their community back to normal, it was scary. They were, they were, you know, we're gonna have to pay sixty thousand dollars for this and that. I'm just doing it. Well, we, we, we just can't. That was humbling. That was, that was, you really don't know how green the, the, the grass is until you're there with it, because these people are trying to, I don't know. They're having to be strategic with what contracts they sign first, and we just put them on the table and get to work. But they're having to, to, to really weigh out these options of what's going on. Their entire infrastructure, uh, the mountains has a pretty extensive, uh, natural gas lines. Down this one particular road, natural gas gone, water gone, sewer gone, stormwater gone. And unfortunately, every road was nearly this way here. Even if you wanted supplies and equipment to get to you. Then the Lord got real close riding these, these roads last week. We, we had, we had a lot of talking going on. Um, you see right here, county water inside of this system right here? I don't know when water will, will be restored there. In, in Black Mountain, when I left, the public works director felt confident that they want to do some system tests and things like this and the other. Um, I have been in contact with colleagues that I have across the state in different counties that are saying that it will be months before water's restored. I took that water scare we had several months back, and it was a big deal to all of us and rightfully so. This is home. But they're living that every single day. There's hospitals in that area that are getting five fifty-three foot tractor trailers full of potable water every day to keep those patients up and going. That's a logistical beast. I, I just can't imagine the efforts that are going into this at the state and federal level. This is more just to, to kind of, you look at these beautiful mountain streams that are all through these curving and winding mountains, and now you look down and there's, there's chunks of asphalt the size of, of, of modular homes and, and pipe just riddled into, into the nearby area. If you can see this photo right here, that radio tower in the back, which is how they normally would have got it crossed, um, is, is, is crippled in half. It looks like a paper clip. This commodity here, this is a, uh, a bus from Virginia, from Hampton Roads area up at Suffolk, they brought down, uh, that was able to supplant our, um, our communications need quite a good bit. Now, it only cost them two point nine million ten years ago, so maybe we can work out a Craigslist deal with them. This is the part where I want to talk about the, the stuff I've seen on social media about there not being help. Is there enough help there? There'll never be enough. There's never enough help here when I need it. There's never enough time, money, or resources to fix any problem. You see the top left corner, duck? You don't get any further away from western North Carolina than duck. That's as far as the east is from the west. Those guys rode eight hours. There's an ambulance standing in the bottom from Bladen County. These folks over here from Virginia. There were task force from FEMA working in the area, um, urban search and rescue. There were four local search and rescues. There were six state resources, eight federal resources. This is just in Black Mountain. This isn't across out of western North Carolina. This is in one town of eighty-five hundred people. Fifty state and local law enforcement officers, dozens of firefighters. We, uh, Hope County has firefighters downrange right now serving in different capacities. Numerous EMS providers. I've heard time and time again, FEMA's not there. One thing I want to put out there, um, I'm definitely not on the payroll with FEMA. FEMA only has about twenty-five hundred full-time employees. These guys are from Miami, and they're in western North Carolina right now. I'd ask that when you see this information on social media, this disinformation, you take time to vet this stuff. Some things that I've heard about during this, there was a church in X, Y, and Z that had two hundred people and that was there for days. Didn't happen. I called the guy that was in that jurisdiction, Demo, but I just said, did this happen? Never heard of it. There was another one that, that's made the, the news of the day about a fire chief telling a fellow in a helicopter, he couldn't fly around anymore. What, the official word hasn't been, um, released yet is that that individual was flying in the airspace where there were hoisting operations going on, and they just kind of pulled up. It was a huge issue with drones and aircraft because it was uncontrolled airspace. Everybody was cowboy in it. There were forty-one reported near misses to the FAA in forty-eight hours. That's a lot of people in there. They told me when I got there, they said, can't you have to fly you out? Not happening. Not happening. This don't fly well. That's the manager. I heard word that national, North Carolina National Guard weren't doing anything. These Lakota helicopters, you see the, the tail wings right here on the rotors, on the, the rear fins, North Carolina National Guard flag. I did, I don't know how many missions, getting people in, in desolate places, food and water, not me, me putting in the resource request. These guys executing it, definitely getting downrange. Private partners, military partners, fire, everybody, uh, chipping in. This is a beautiful thing, and I, I hate that disasters is what brings us together so often. This was their first town hall meeting, and I've seen the beauty in this community before, in the aftermath of Florence and other occasions where the community bands together. This was a super positive, um, event. They brought these folks together, and these folks are here. They haven't had hot meals, hot showers. I forgot what hot water felt like until I got home. Um, mountain creeks are, oof. Um, it's just, it's just beautiful to see the community come together like that. I told you the worst part of when I got there, and again, this is specific to Black Mountain, by the time I left, ninety percent of the areas were searched. Ninety-one percent of the roads were open. The only areas we had that weren't reopened from debris were those areas that, um, had washed out. Electricity was about seventy-five percent of the, the municipality's, um, citizens. Water infrastructure, I talked about that five hundred, uh, feet of ten-inch pipe, and we had full connectivity back inside the ci- uh, city limits. Points of distribution, they're running about seven thousand gallons of water a day, two thousand pounds of ice, all kinds of, of food products going in there. all kinds of food products going in there, food delivery set up on a regular basis, given 4,000 hot meals a day. Stores started reopening. I tell everybody here locally, if we can get Walmart back open, people take care of theirselves. We got their stuff back open there, people start taking care of theirselves. 200 first responders. I thought I did some big stuff here. It took a fish out of a whole other pond and really opened my eyes to large-scale things. About 200 community volunteers. I didn't wanna get too graphic with the photos that are there. The other thing that I'll tell you on social media, and I've looked at this, it's coming home, I'm talking to my family, the stuff you see on social media, I was speaking to somebody outside, the depth of what's there, the realism of what there, these pictures don't do it justice. Please continue to send your prayers down there. The last thing I'll talk about before I leave from here, the donations, if you're trying to send stuff over there, make sure it's got somebody to go there to. We had so many people showing up. I drove from Alabama, I drove from Florida, I drove from here, I drove from there. They show up with whatever commodities they have and just expect us to have a place for it. We've seen it here, you know, and I'm just gonna be real, we all know, you get expired food and clothes somebody didn't wanna have in the attic, and, you know, there's bags of gym shorts, and it's the middle of 60 degrees in the fall of North Carolina. People took great offense to it, but it's an incident inside of an incident trying to figure out where to put this stuff at. It's taxing to put responders there. I know it's not the most popular thing, but if you can find a vetted place and if you got a ties or any type of love in western North Carolina, financial contributions are by far easiest. I assure you, $20, it'll cost more than $20, you get a case of water you dropped off here by truck to Boone or to wherever that's up there. And the towns up there did have, you know, great success with that. This is what I'll leave you all with, they got hope, they got a strong community. I was going through doing the damage survey, and this was a building that fell over, they letting the community know their anchor holds. Again, I want to end this with saying, I've learned a lot of lessons there that I've briefed out with my boss internally, we're gonna look at some new stuff to be able to make Hope County more resilient. Things that I didn't publicize would happen, definitely did happen, and I want to make sure that because of the lessons we learned downrange, we're gonna be more resilient if and when our time comes. Commissioners, I appreciate the support you've given us in budget time. Every year, I've put in some swag stuff, and I was like, man, they're not gonna do it, and it got done, and I was able to put those resources to use where I'd never had to use them here before. Chris and I have had those five black boxes with those crater points in there for probably three years and never touched them, rather than just making sure the maintenance on them were kept up. And that box was worth its weight in gold. So, I appreciate, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate every one of you, what you sit up here and do during budget time. Ms. Edens, thank you for putting it forth and getting that ball rolling. We did some good work out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to just say to thank Andrew for all the hard work that he's done and everybody over there, the first responders and everything, but tonight is a good lesson for all of us to learn that, you know, our country has got to a point to where, you know, you can just get on TV and tell a lie and it's okay. And that's what's got our country in the mess that we're in with social media. And, you know, people just, you know, giving out, you know, just lies, you know, they wanna make it, you know, what they wanna make it look like for whatever political reason or whatever. Especially, these folks are suffering and people are out telling lies on FEMA and Red Cross and, you know, people right now, they don't even wanna send their money to either one of them because of the lies that have been told. Andrew, thank you for bringing us the truth. And I thank God that the truth will always stand and will make its way through. Thank you, brother.
Thank you, Andrew. Certainly, truth always had crushed the earth, but it lies again.
I have 25 residents that, one of our homes in the mountains was a passageway toward the bridge was torn up, and they couldn't get out. And the National Guard airlifted them and moved them to another home. And we took in some of ours and some other people, but they couldn't get out. There's still stuff. The National Guard has been, and local people up there have been really good to help out with the elderly.
They've done a very good job, and glad Hope County's able to handle that.
I think 25 people out.
Absolutely. We do some great things with our great people. That's it, Tish?
Yes, I'm Kim for helping out.
Absolutely.
I wanna echo what Commissioner Hunt said, I just, you can't thank your staff enough. You know, the county manager, she's our leader, and she works seven days a week. And when people talk about the car she's driving, and she works seven days a week. She works 16, 17 hours a day. I can call her with an emergency on 11 o'clock on Saturday night, or she can call us. And instead of them looking at the job she does, we can't pay her enough for the job she does. And then look at the job that Andrew does and Brian Marley does and Chris and all of our staff. We got a little less than 600 employees. I tell everybody, we got the best staff in the whole county, and I believe that in all states. I don't have no problem with our staff because we tell them, you have to put people first. We wanna be customer, what'd you say, leads, customer service or?
Customer service, that's right.
And that's what we wanna do, we wanna put our people first. And they wanted to go to Asheville and Buncombe County to serve, they wanted to go. We didn't have to ask them to go, y'all, they wanted to go. What'd I tell about Andrew, about his character? That's amazing, you know, and then you can see in his articulation and his speech, you know, how it felt to be out there doing what they do. I love our staff, and I fight for our staff too.
I believe that.
Yeah, I love my staff.
And certainly, that's why I say so often, Adam.
County manager, good job.
One more thing.
I might get you to believe it, you're the greatest county manager in North Carolina, you better believe it now.
Say all those great things. I will be on vacation and on a state.
Oh, you can't go on vacation.
Starting Thursday.
Motion, motion's in, Brad.
I will be available by phone, so you guys can still reach me.